The November 13th, 2025 Des Moines City Council meeting is now called to order. Councilmember Oxiger, who I didn't tell ahead of time, will be leading us in the pledge tonight, so please stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome. I appreciate all of you who are visiting tonight, that you're here on a cold rainy night, came out to visit us. And if you're attending on Channel 21 or watching us online, please recognize that we can't attend to our phones from the dius. So if you have any technical difficulties, you can email cityclerk@desmoinewa.gov. And maybe she can help you out. So, okay, let the record show that all council members are present, and Councilmember Nutting is joining us online remotely tonight. Do we have any correspondence not previously received by council?
No, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. I did see this letter that we all have, I think everybody got. All right, so next up is time for comments from the public. And do we have it? Oh, we do. Thank you so much. So tonight, a little bit unusual, we have four public hearings. And so when we have a public hearing, the public comment portion that applies to that subject matter, we receive that during the public hearings so that the public comments can be accounted for that item. So those are, we have, the four items are the property tax, biennial budget amendments, land use applications, and co-living housing subject. So if you have any comments with regard to those items, we'll ask that you please hold them so that it can go on record for those items. Otherwise, if you have something else that you'd like to bring forward, feel free to come to the podium. And please, please be respectful when you come forward. You'll have three minutes to speak, state your name and your city of residence. And we do have a couple of people signed up. So first up is Scott Wilkins.
That didn't even have to call me. Deputy Mayor, Council, City Manager. Anyway, you all have an invite on your desk, but I wanted to formally invite you on December 3rd to our tenant appreciation party. We'll be serving chili and cornbread and everything else. I know it's a busy night for a lot of you, but if you can show, everybody would love to see you. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Scott. Appreciate it. Next up, Joe Duzenberry.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Joe Duzenberry, Des Moines resident and member of the Airport Committee. And tonight, Steve Reagan, another member of the committee, is here with me. The committee met for the third time this last Monday. We're still in the information gathering phase. Most of our discussions are about how we can best apply our efforts. But at that meeting, we did have time to discuss the issue of the proposed ILA with BIRIEN and C-TAC for the coordinated review of the SAM and any ongoing legal action after that. The committee's recommendation is to approve the ILA. We understand that there's concerns. We have heard comments about the cost share formula, and we know that the City of C-TAC's special arrangement with the airport could be a problem. But at this time, the ILA is the best path forward, we think. And we voted on that. The committee also discussed the NEPA determination that was published recently. Like everyone, it's hard for us to accept the findings that the forecasted significant increases in passenger and freight operations at the airport will have no impact on our city whatsoever. The committee knows that the state's process, the SEPA, is supposed to be more detailed, but considering the NEPA findings will be in place for at least, until at least 2032, and no one can predict what will happen in the next seven years, an appeal at this point could extend the process and keep some avenues open for future action if needed. And the committee recommends that the city go ahead with the NEPA appeal. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So is there anybody who came tonight desiring to give public comment on an issue and didn't realize that you needed to sign up in order to do that, would like to come forward? All right. So next up is the opportunity for regional committee reports. Right now, we're not operating under a separate committee model, but we have what we call the committee of the whole, which doesn't leave room for committee chairs. However, we do have council members who serve out in the region, at regional tables. And so this is an opportunity for them to share things that are pertinent to our particular community or something that our citizens would be interested in. Any items that people want to share? Okay, through councilmembers, I'll start with Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. Briefly, there's not a meeting this week, but the Flood Control District is going to approve its budget, which we took a look at last month. And just of note for the city of Des Moines is that I'd like to encourage people who, incoming councilmembers, to engage with SCA. There's all kinds of in-the-weeds-y stuff. You're supposed to represent the entire region, you know? You're not supposed to just advocate for your city. However, things like the Flood Control District, King County is larger than many states in this great country. And the interests of the county, if it was scored on any, in any of these domains, in terms of like, you know, the biggest river, there would never be any money for urban flooding projects. And every year, when we vote on these things, there is always a risk of the small amount of money that we depend on for projects like the beach park and urban flooding things we've had around McSorley to get swept. So the value in even these mundane groups is these things that you don't notice. And I'm pleased to report that the urban flooding, the two sentences, has been retained. That was not a given. The other committee is regional transit. And this is because we're not going to meet until after the vote. We hear from the public all the time about public safety on metro. And those concerns have been taken extremely seriously. I want to give a shout out to outgoing Council District Five member, DeShawn Quinn. And there is a new budget for about $67 million for transit safety improvements. And I try not to be too, to go too hard on this stuff because I use transit all the time, and my experience is extremely positive in general, and I don't want to catastrophize. But at the same time, they are putting real money and personnel into this, union contracts, and it's a negotiation. And so I hope that that is of some benefit to the city in the next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris, not only for your pitch for Sound Cities, which I, I'm the president, so of course I appreciate that pitch. Lots of amazing regional opportunity there, but also a thank you to Councilmember Bauducci for her work on regional public safety for transit. So thank you for that report out. I appreciate it. Councilmember Mahoney.
Thank you, Mayor. Today, I attended the PSRC Transportation Policy Board meeting, and we had Representative Fay speak to us as well. He talked about ferries in particular and the efforts to go electrified. They had a timeline. They're finding it a little bit more difficult to do. They do believe that it's the road to go. They have a lot of interest in it. They're looking at how they can apply the climate dollars to that. So it sounded promising, it just sounded like their timeline extended, is the way I'll put it. The other big conversation, and probably the majority of it, was getting revenues for roads and so forth, and the gas tax and so forth. What they've noticed is that there's been a severe drop off in revenue, particularly from electric and hybrid cars, cars that get over 25 miles a gallon and so forth. So they are looking at road usage fees for those vehicles. And the theory is, is that everybody uses the roads, and if you're not paying your, a fair share of taxes, yes, you're doing green things by doing, you know, getting, doing a hybrid and not using fossil fuels or something like that, or an electric vehicle, but you also have to drive on the roads, and that's how they're trying to find a fundum. They've come up with a couple new ways of revenue. So there was always the road usage fee, and they're particularly for that. But the other one I've heard, and they're starting to explore and seems to be getting wind, is what's called a retail usage fee. And what that is, is so an example is you've got a distribution center in Kent, and you order something from Amazon. They're looking at additional fees that'll come from Kent to here and both cities, if those were the two cities that they cross, but if they happen to cross C-TAC too, there would be a percentage assigned, one, the person buying the package would get this tax or fee, but then there would be, they're determining on who would get what percentage of that in a city. As far as, they'd get a share, but the state would use, right now it's about 80%, for the state, and then 20% of that would go to the cities. So it may be a new revenue source, but it's also, it's another use fee and so forth. So I thought that was interesting. And I think in the next couple of years, it's, they're definitely going to have to change their revenue models because what they have today is not working, and we continue to have large deficits. And people want roads paved, and trying to find a way to pave it is becoming an art in itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Well, I practice Peyton, another SCA, Sound Cities Association group, and it's absolutely a fantastic organization that does a lot. I am on the Public Issues Committee. And we had two meetings last night. One was a pre-meeting for a utility rate summit that is being put together with King County providers. Right now, 2025 combined household utility bills are approximately $414 for all the various utility rates that you're paying. Natural gas is 101, electricity is 96, solid waste 39, storm water 34, sewer 89, and water 55. And all of that adds up. And every single one of those is asking to increase their rates. And that is going to really, really put a crimp on a lot of people. And these, of course, are things that you have to have, that you're going to have, pay the rate in if you're living in, no matter what your income is. So they tend to be regressive in nature when they're imposed on everybody. The Sound Cities Association, the Public Issues Committee, had asked for a summit to try to, because we had heard over the course of the year from each of these entities asking to raise their rates and what their plans were for the future. And they were all individualized. Nobody had combined them all together to take a look at how much this is going to be. And so tomorrow, up in C-TAC, there is going to be a utility rate summit that people will be attending and advocating for various particular, they'll have a big discussion about, you know, how is this going to play out in the long run, particularly when you have, you know, opportunities like, you know, solid waste is insisted on landfill as a way to do it rather than incineration. And so we're way behind Europe in getting rid of that waste, and we're running out of landfill. And that means we're having to truck it elsewhere, which is much more expensive, causing those rates to go up. You know, solid storm water and sewer, both have big treatment facilities going on, and yet sewer is only about 10% of the total amount of water that needs to be treated. And isn't there a way to combine the treatment for both of those to do that? So they're trying to look at ways to save some money to keep those rates from going up as far as they are. The actual Public Issues Committee meeting, we had several of the preliminary things, Chair's report and the Executive Director's report, and then talked about the SCA legislative agenda and county priorities. And so we have a state legislative agenda, and then we have priorities that we want to work with for the county, because those are two very different entities, and they operate and function differently. So that's why there, one's an agenda, because we've got a short session coming up in the state legislature, and we're going to be working with the county all across the year. But they're not very different, and certainly nothing is in conflict with what Des Moines' legislative agendas are. We also had a briefing on the transit safety and security that you just heard Councilmember Harris talk about. And, you know, this, you may recall there was a bus driver that got stabbed on a bus and died. And that was in 2023. And now there's been this two-year process to come up with a really, really sound plan for how we can increase the safety on all kinds of public transit. And it was, it was very, a very good presentation on all the work that we've been done, that had been done on that. We also had a presentation on unapproved food vendors. That is becoming a bigger and bigger problem throughout King County, and the basic problem is the food's not safe. There is no guarantee that you're going to not get sick if you eat from a street vendor who is just set up shop by the side of the street. And yet we don't have, the Food Safety Division is not prepared to go enforce the laws on this because they don't have that kind of staff. They do regular inspections of permitted places. They've done a lot to try to reach out, to encourage people to get permitted, and they're going to perhaps do some more public outreach to discourage people from using unpermitted food vendors to try to make the level of success for unpermitted food vendors go down significantly so everybody's playing by the same rules. And also, those that are, that are paying by the rules, they're losing money because these are people that might otherwise do that. We had a discussion, PSRC has a committee restructuring which would actually diminish the value of small to medium-sized cities on PSRC. And that was met with universal pushback, so that will be taken back to PSRC for further discussion. And then we briefly touched on, you know, election results and the roundtable, and then upcoming boards and committees. And we always have, leave open for anybody that's putting a levy or a ballot measure on the ballot, but I think we all have ballot fatigue at the moment. And so that'll wait till next time. So, anyway, it was a great meeting, covered a lot of stuff. My brain was full afterwards, so I just wanted to watch a little TV because it's a lot to take in one night. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Appreciate the reports. Next up is the City Manager.
We don't have anything tonight, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Appreciate, I was going to say appreciate that, but, you know.
Revenue's going down.
Right. Next up is our consent agenda. Could the City Clerk please read the consent, what's on consent tonight?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, B&amp;O Tax Model Ordinance Update, second reading. Item four, 2025 Neighborhood Traffic Calming Project Contract Award. Item five, C-TAC Stakeholder Advisory Roundtable Position Appointment. And that concludes the consent agenda, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Do I have a motion?
So move.
A Councilmember Mahoney for the motion, and the second, Councilmember Nutting for the second. Is there an item that a councilmember wishes to pull? All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. And it's unanimous, 7-0. Thank you so much. And congratulations, Joe. Good job. Appreciate you. Thank you for your service. All right. For those that, no, no, he just got appointed. That was the start appointment, so Joe Duzenberry got that appointment tonight. All right, we're going to begin on our public, segment of public hearings. We have a few of them up. So the first one is in regard to our property tax levy. This is our second reading, and the purpose of this agenda item is for the City Council to hold a public hearing to consider our property tax levy. And we have our Finance Director, Jeff Friend, up to give us a presentation. I will now open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council, members of the public. Jeff Friend, Finance Director, presenting the 2026 Property Tax Levy. This is the second reading, and as we have, I guess, what, 15 public hearings tonight or something?
Thank you.
We're going to move through this rather briskly, as we presented it before. So the first slide shows an actual property tax bill for a resident of Des Moines. And the pie chart on the right shows graphically the different portions of your property tax bill. When someone gets a property tax bill, and a property owner gets one, on that bill it lists the different taxing districts that are collecting tax from the tax payer. If you notice, on the right-hand side of that pie chart, there's only two colors, blue and red, which is your school district and Washington State Schools. The top four, actually, they're listed on the schedule on the left, which would also include King County and the Fire District. That makes up about 75% of the property tax bill for a resident of Des Moines. The city is the fifth on the list at 8.36%, and you see the arrow there pointing to our relatively small share of the property tax pie. So new for 2026, property tax levy amount requested will be a little over $5.9 million. The proposed levy includes a 1% allowable increase of $57,875. The city's overall valuation was a little over $6.8 billion. Sorry, billion, like, there's a lot of places there to keep track of. That's an increase of about $291 million from the prior year. The city had an additional $37 million in new construction, which added $31,000 to the overall property tax base. So the total increase from last year would be about $132,000, an average of about $12.80 per parcel. There's about 10,300 parcels in the city. So if you've paid attention to property tax presentations, which of course you would want to, we talk a lot about the 1%. The state legislature caps what we can collect at 1% from the prior year collected. And this is an answer that was, a question that was brought up last, for the first reading was, but there's other pieces to that, which is correct. So when we calculate the property tax levy, we look at what we collected last year, we add 1%, which is that $57,000. But then there's also new property that comes online, and that's that $31,000. We add that as well, as if it had already been there. And then the last piece is, if someone appeals their property tax bill, which they can do with the county, and they win, then the county makes us hold because we didn't collect those funds in the first place, when we were expecting to. So all of that means, per $1,000 of assessed value in 2026, the property tax rate would be a little over 86 cents per thousand of assessed value. This is a 10-year chart, so you can see back in 2017, it was $1.51 per thousand. So values have risen since then. You can see in the last few years, it's been kind of between 85 cents and 90 cents per thousand. So suggested motions, and that concludes the presentation.
Thank you so much. So now it's time for the public comment portion of the public hearing. Please keep, if you come to the podium, please keep your comments respectful and state your name and city of residence. You will have three minutes to speak. Is there anyone who, oh, no, do I have anybody signed up? So I have nobody signed up. So is there anybody who wishes to speak who did not sign up? Second call, is there anyone who didn't sign up to speak and wishes to speak? And third call, is there anyone who did not sign up to speak and wishes to speak? All right. Council, do you have any questions? Please, questions only. Councilmember Grace Matsuji.
Thank you very much for your presentation. If you were to go back to the history slide, and I know that you talked briefly about property value as it relates to this chart, but can you also tell us why the rate decreased so much between 2017 and let's just say 2021?
So it has to do with property values, and a lot of people think that their property tax bill is based on their value. What it's really not is really based on what you paid the year before and what we collected the year before. But where the property value comes into play is when the rate is calculated. So what's happening on this chart is that property values are rising, but what is being collected in property tax or what's being paid by the taxpayer is pretty flat. So as those values go up, and you're not really paying much more in tax, then the rate is going to drop as a result. And so over time, the rate has come down because the values are much higher.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. I'm sure I ask you this every year, but do you get a number from the county as to how many people appeal or get a senior exemption? Not addresses or anything, just?
No, we don't typically do that, no.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Nutting, you're good. Okay, no questions? All right. I will now close the public hearing. And do we have a motion? Okay, Councilmember Nutting, go ahead.
Sorry, I thought I was unmuted and switching back and forth. I move to enact draft ordinance number 25-101, determining the amount of funds to be raised by Advilarium Taxes for the year 2026 for the general city expenditures.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second goes to the Deputy Mayor. Any discussion? Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, I do have something to say. First of all, the King County has the, hands down, the most generous senior property tax exemption in the United States of America. It's really quite a thing, and I happen to know that from talking with the outgoing assessor that not enough people apply for it. And so long as it doesn't harm the city, I am all in favor, and I encourage anyone watching this, people who are eligible do not think to apply. And beyond that, I am generally vehemently against tax increases. I would encourage the city, the guy, Schiller, this Nobel Prize guy, did this housing study, and Seattle is truly an outlier in terms of skyrocketing property values. We're fundamentally different from Atlanta, Houston. We're fundamentally different from Atlanta, Houston, um, just any number of what you would call, you know, this area, successful community, is regions. But, um, the thing that never gets talked about is that pie. And, um, I can sense, um, my colleagues, whatever, from here, but we always talk about increases, but it should be the policy of the city to advocate for a greater share of that pie. The state budget is ginormous, and because of that huge property value, people really do pay like very high taxes here relative to a lot of areas. And somehow, um, it, that balance used to be far more equitable.
Are you advocating for something on our ledge agenda, councilmember?
Yeah, it, it should definitely be the case that.
We just had that conversation. Did you wanna bring it up?
I'm not.
Then?
Just, just telling you, it should, this situation, people, the, the, there should be a mechanism for us to start thinking about getting more money back from the state.
Okay, that would be a good subject for our legislative agenda conversation. So keep it in your, keep it in your pocket. Okay? Any other discussion on this one? Councilmember Mahoney?
Yeah, I, I don't like property tax increases at all myself, but this, uh, this lid that we've had of one percent, I was reviewing, um, inflation rates. The, if you type into Google and ask, what is the cumulative inflation rate over the last five years? It's between twenty-two and twenty-five percent. And things like this that cap our taxes, that we're efforts that I think start, stop big cities from big spending, have really hurt small cities. And, um, you know, we, we approve this, it's a hundred and something thousand dollars, which aver, I just did the math on it. It's four dollars and one cent per resident as a tax increase. And I'll bet you our costs went up twelve, or fifteen, per resident. And this is a difficulty of trying to deal with inflation and caps like this to support a city. So I support this, um, and I do support what we're gonna talk about later, and I'll leave it to that. Thank you.
Any other discussion down the line? All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. It's a seven zero. Thank you so much. Second motion. Uh, did you wanna?
I move to.
Thank you.
I'm, I move to enact draft ordinance number twenty-five dash one zero two, authorizing the increase in Advallarium taxes for the year 2026 for the general city expenditures.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Mahoney for the second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor? And it's a seven zero. Okay, great. Thank you so much. Are you here, uh, for the second one as well? Okay. Public hearing number, oh, did I finish that out well? Let me double check. I did. Okay, public hearing number two. This is in regard to our biennial budget amendments, and this is our first reading. The purpose of this agenda item is for the city council to hold a public hearing to consider our biennial budget amendments. I will now open the public hearing, and we'll have a presentation with finance director Jeff Friend.
Okay, uh, this is the presentation of the twenty-five, twenty-six biennial budget amendments. Uh, we're gonna take a look. Uh, we're gonna get a refresher on biennial budgeting, a reminder of, of how that works, uh, why we do it. Um, when that's done, there'll be a financial portion, uh, that focuses on the general fund, which is the primary, primary fund that we're focused on, uh, with budget amendments, and a couple notes on some other funds, uh, so we'll get started. So biennial budgeting, uh, what is it? So last year, council approved, uh, a change from annual budgeting, where we budgeted one year at a time, to biennial budgeting, which we do two years at a time. So in the year of 2024, we worked on the budget for this year and next year. A budget for 2025 was adopted, a budget for 2026 was adopted. So that would be year one, under the how it works, uh, section there, under adoption. So year one, 2024, council adopts, uh, budget for both years. Uh, but we are required, and would do anyway, amid biennium review this year in year two, um, which is our opportunity to update the budget based on current, uh, knowledge of the economy, uh, you know, updated, uh, forecasts and projections. So we don't just leave it based on what we knew last year, which is less than we know now. So the advantages of biennial budgeting, uh, and the reason we wanted to do it, uh, is it saves time and resources. Um, so for staff, uh, department directors, anybody working on a budget, they don't have to start from scratch every year. Uh, the year in between, which is this year, uh, we work on reviewing the budget, we update it. So there's some time spent on budgeting, but not as much, and that, the balance of that time could be spent on monitoring programs, you know, and working on, you know, the services that are provided, other than just, you know, working on more paperwork. Uh, improves long-term planning, uh, as opposed to, uh, budgeting for just one year at a time, where you might look at short-term fixes. Uh, biennial budgeting makes you look at a longer, uh, period of time. It doesn't let you off the hook as easily, 'cause if you think you got one year figured out, you still have to be concerned, uh, with the next year and the impact on that year. Uh, and enhances oversight, related to what I first mentioned, you have more time to do oversight. Uh, and less politicization of the budget process, so the major budget year, when we budget for those two years, is not an election year. So there's less politicization of the budget process. So speaking of that, where we are now, we are in the mid-biennium review. Uh, reviewing the approved 2026 budget, uh, to recommend amendments. So we're gonna update it, uh, with our current, uh, knowledge and, uh, projections, and it's not a new budget. So 2026 budget was adopted last year. We're just, uh, reviewing it and updating it. So the process, uh, is, uh, has gone according to the schedule. So the first, uh, column there, or actually the second, uh, it says city manager, management team. You see those dates are all from earlier in the year. Uh, that's when, uh, the city manager and assistant city manager and, uh, the finance director, uh, we met with each department, where we reviewed everything line by line. And that process started in, in July and went through, actually through October this year. So we put a lot of work and effort, uh, into that process. Uh, the next column over is the citizens advisory board, so I did a presentation, uh, for the citizens advisory board on October twenty-ninth. Unfortunately, we're still working on things, so it wasn't as, as meaty as it could have been, but next year, uh, we'll make up for that. And then the city council column on the end, you'll see, here we are on November thirteenth, uh, presenting, uh, the budget amendments, uh, and, uh, also the CIP later tonight, and the property tax, uh, just now. And then we'll be bringing back the, uh, budget amendments for a second reading on December eleventh. And this schedule was shown on October ninth, uh, to introduce the process, uh, this year to council. So the financial portion of the presentation will start with the general fund. And we'll talk about revenues first, uh, then moving, uh, into our, um, adjustments to expenditures. So general fund revenue, uh, for 2025, uh, we're recommending an overall increase of ninety-five thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. And for 2026, uh, we are reducing, uh, the revenue by three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. And those are kind of like headline numbers, those are overall, but if you dig into them, there's more details. Uh, we did reduce revenue in 2025, uh, but we also had a couple of one-time, uh, pieces of revenue that we did receive this year that actually helped us out. So, um, that's why that's a positive number there. And the, and what we're doing with budget amendments also, when we do update the budgets, we're really bringing it into alignment, uh, with our operations and our current projections. So, um, you see there, the categories down there, um, the revenue counties of sales tax and B and O tax, um, those are being reduced in both years. That's really the core of the activity that, um, happened on the revenue side as far as, uh, major adjustments that we made. Uh, so you'll see that the first line is, uh, regular sales tax. We're leaving it alone, uh, for this year. Next year, uh, we're being conservative and reducing that expectation by seventy thousand dollars. The key word in discussing the economy that I've heard like all year long, uh, has been uncertainty. Um, we've had tariffs, just, and Washington State right now is considered to be in, in a recession. So we're just gonna be conservative and bring that estimate down, uh, seventy thousand dollars for next year. Um, we have sales tax one time and B and O tax one time, that are both in the blue rose there, that we're reducing, uh, this year. We have, those are taxes collected on, uh, projects in the city that are valued, uh, through permitting at fifteen million dollars or more. Uh, we have quite a few of those coming. When we did the budget, I think we expected that, that revenue to show up a bit earlier than it has. Uh, so it hasn't really shown up. This year is probably imminent, uh, maybe in the fourth quarter and, and next year. So, um, our projected actuals, if you can see the, um, I'm gonna try it, these are, see here, the forty thousand and the fifteen thousand is more realistic, uh, than what we budgeted. So that's why we have, uh, significant reductions on those two categories. Um, the regular B and O tax was just, sometimes things get over-budgeted. Uh, those were, uh, that particular, uh, line item, uh, was over-budgeted compared to historical trends. And then we've talked about the square footage tax, um, and this is an adjustment to bring it down from the, um, what was in the budget at eight hundred and forty and eight hundred and sixty-five. Now that we've worked on it, worked on implementing it, uh, we feel five hundred and fifteen is a much more reasonable projection. So we're, again, uh, reducing revenue by amount, those amounts there to get to the five hundred and fifteen. So it reflects more conservative and realistic revenue forecast and economic indicators. On the expenditure side, so we talked about, um, the process that we went through, meeting with departments. So, uh, we did meet with departments, uh, at the end of July through August. We did line-by-line review, saw where we're at, and then we were sent back to the drawing board, uh, to come up with three percent and five percent, uh, reduction scenarios, just across the board, uh, in the general fund. And then the goal is to minimize, also to minimize impact to city services as much as possible. And the reason we put that extra effort in, uh, was because we know that the budget is being impacted, uh, by these cost drivers, which the first one is, and has been mentioned, inflation. So inflation over the last few years has been pretty high, was on the decrease, um, but is slowly creeping up since April. So it's not as bad as it was a couple of years ago, um, but it is rebounding a little bit, uh, through, since April, uh, this year. Uh, second thing is bargaining agreement. So we've had negotiations with the police guild this year. The Teamsters, uh, bargaining unit is up next year. Um, usually, um, those have cost impacts, uh, once those are ratified and put in place. Uh, third one is rising health insurance premiums. Uh, we have a slide in a bit to discuss those, but, um, it's been in the news a lot lately, health insurance costs increasing. And then fourth, uh, cost driver is SCORE. SCORE, um, has gone through some things this year. I don't envy. They lost a contract from, uh, Department of Human Services that was about three to four million dollars annually. Also, their, um, insurance is gonna increase about a hundred and fifty percent. So that's not fun for them. But we are also an owner city of the SCORE jail, so those kinds of activities, when that happens to them, they do filter through. And, and we'll have a couple of numbers up here in a slide or two to take a look at how that impacts the city. So expenditures, uh, the first schedule at the top, the total adjustment to expenditures for this year would be seven hundred and eighteen thousand, ninety-six dollars. The, uh, adjustment for 2026 would be to reduce expenditures in the budget by three hundred and forty thousand dollars. So the schedule down there, again, has highlights, um, it shows the categories, the 2025 adopted budget, 2026 adopted budget, and then the, uh, recommended amendments. Uh, so the, we look at 2025, we have staff reduction costs, uh, those were not in the budget. Uh, we terminated, uh, two director-level positions. Those employees had, um, employment contracts, we had honor, which, uh, had, basically, we had to pay them out. The police salary OT, that amount, there's really kind of a placeholder, uh, for paying the guild an amount that's, uh, retroactive, as their contract is, uh, under negotiation. So if they were to ratify their contract and we were to pay them this year, we'd have to pay them all the way back to January first. So that would be estimated at about two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, uh, for this year. Uh, body cam refresh, uh, staying in the 2025 column, was not a budgeted, uh, expenditure. It also was not a budgeted revenue on the grant side. So we did increase, uh, in the budget, um, revenue by that amount. So it, it's being paid for, it really has no net effect on the budget, uh, but we do have to account for the expenditure side. Uh, the homeless encampment cleanup was not a budgeted or foreseen, uh, event. Uh, that was seventy-two thousand dollars. We wanna capture that in the budget. And then an increase, uh, for SCORE of, uh, twenty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars, uh, because, uh, we are being invoiced that amount more, uh, this year due to the events, uh, with their finances. On the 2026 side, uh, we have a decrease in leases, uh, for police. Extra higher wages, there's a position that, um, doesn't need to be filled next year, so that was, uh, fifty-two thousand dollars off the budget. Um, SCORE, you see, it's going down, and the thing to keep in mind with SCORE is that what we are billed is billed based upon our usage. And there's like five user cities, it's like a pie, and if someone uses more, uh, if their usage goes up, they pay more of that pie, and our share goes down. So, um, that is actually thanks to the city of Auburn, really cranking up their usage. So even though our costs have gone up, our share of that pie dropped a little bit. Uh, but it should be noted that, uh, other than just the regular billing, SCORE is also looking at other ways, uh, to bill for like court services, whatnot. So, uh, for our regular billing, it'll be down, but we're keeping our eye on the situation to see like if they're gonna try, you know, if there's gonna be other costs we pay for separately than that. Uh, insurance, our insurance bill looks like it's down a bit, so we just decreased, decreased that, thirty-seven thousand dollars. Um, public defenders, uh, there's a new state mandate about the, the limiting the size of their caseload, which would increase, uh, expense for public defenders. The hundred and ten thousand dollars represents, uh, what we think, uh, the public safety sales tax can pick up, and we'll see this number show up in a slide about that, uh, fund. Uh, city currents would be done in-house, uh, hopefully saving us thirty thousand dollars. Uh, professional services for human resources, you know, that is also being down, thirty-nine thousand dollars. And then we have what's called a contingency, which we'll explain, uh, in a slide in just a moment. And that's the next slide. So a contingency, this, um, is just really planning for something that's unplanned. So the reason we do budget amendments is to update the budget, because you can plan all you want, but then things happen you might not expect. Uh, so one way to be flexible, or to kind of account for that, is to actually budget for it. Uh, and I wanna emphasize the last bullet point up there, that spending any contingency requires council approval. So what this is, is we've put, uh, we're recommending a fifty thousand dollar line item in the budget, which can only be spent with council approval if something, you know, unexpected happens. So that's the, the graph there that says contingency, a potential occurrence of a negative event in the future. So we just wanna, we wanna plan for that. Um, we think that's, you know, the responsible thing to do. It's fifty thousand dollars, which is not much, but we hope as, as time goes on, that that'll become a larger number in the budget. Um, that gives us a little bit more breathing room. And you might be wondering, well, if things are so tight, why are you budgeting that now? Uh, the reason is when things are good, you don't think about those kinds of things, 'cause you're enjoying the fact that, you know, you don't have to worry so much. Uh, but when things are tighter, or a little more challenging, then you think, okay, maybe we should plan for, if something goes sideways. And so even if it's a little budgeting for just a little bit of contingency, it's a step in the right direction to build in kind of that safety net and that, that line, that buffer into the budget. Health insurance costs. So, uh, we have three, uh, providers of health insurance. We have Kaiser Permanente Regents and the Left Trust for Law Enforcement. You can see those increases are eleven point six percent, eight point seven percent, and five percent. So we have accounted for that, uh, but one strategy that was used, um, is to show, is that, uh, non-represented employees will pay more of the share of that premium. So if, say they, an employee paid ten percent for themselves and twenty percent, uh, of the premium for their dependents, uh, in 2026, they'll be paying thirteen percent of the premium for themselves and, uh, twenty-three percent, uh, for their dependents. And, um, I actually had a question on this, uh, the increase, if you have a large plan, let's say if you have a spouse and two children, the increase is really, um, a majority of it would be paid in this scenario by the employee, by the tune of maybe like a thousand dollars. And so that's a thousand dollars of cost that the employee is basically saving the city, uh, from incurring. So we just wanted to point out the employee participation in the strategy. the employee participation in the strategy. And this, I think Catherine wanted to speak to this.
We're not going through department by department, but this one I wanted to highlight because I think it's my understanding in the past, you all haven't always gotten good visibility into your budget. So as you'll see on the slide ahead, we've got the salaries, which is the council stipends that you all get and the benefits associated with that, which really you don't have much control over. I think in the past, what's been budgeted for supplies and services is absurdly low, which you'll see from the projected actuals. So I am recommending we add five thousand dollars to the council's budget for training and professional development. That may not be enough, but especially with two additional council members, I feel like it's important that we have an actual budget there for that. So I am looking for some feedback on that. And then secondly, it has come up in the past. It's come up again, joining the National League of Cities. The cost to join is what you can see, the thirty-seven hundred, which gives you access to their website. But NLC really, a lot of value is found through traveling and like trips they do and some other kind of for fee aspects, which are not included in this budget. So we are looking for council feedback on that as well. If you all want to do sort of the base membership this year and see how it goes, or if you want to pump this conversation to the 27, 28 budget, and we can talk about sort of joining it where you would really get benefit from it. So, yeah, we're looking for council feedback on both of those items.
Yeah, so this is the forecast with, the first column there is the amended annual budget for 2025. So that column includes all of the amendments that are being recommended. The second column is the projected actuals. And so that's really our projection for the year we think we can land. The third column is the revised budget for 2026, that again includes the budget amendments that are being recommended, and then the forecast for 2027 through 2031. This does follow the trend that FCS presented in their presentation when they shared their long-term forecast. Basically, you know, when your revenues are growing at about one percent, which was the assumption in this forecast, and your expenditures costs are rising at about two to three percent, you know, eventually the revenues fall behind. However, but for tonight, we're really focused on the near term as far as the next few years. The ending cash balance, and really cash is, we're trying to focus on cash. Those are all in yellow because it's greater than zero, but it's less than the sixteen point six seven percent threshold, which is really, do you have enough cash to cover two months of the year? We ended 2024 with about two point eight seven nine million dollars in cash. Budget-wise for 2025, you can see the change in fund balance would be right here, about seventeen thousand dollars. So it would be about the same. But our projections, however, if we outperform the budget and stick to the projections, we hopefully get at least grow a half a million and end with about three point three million dollars in cash. You could see, you know, if things happened according to budget, in 2026, we'd be growing our cash again with another three hundred and thirteen thousand. So really, the goal cash-wise is to have a balance of about four point five million dollars. That would be about two months' worth of cash to cover two months of expenses. And cash is important for the city because if we have cash, we also have more stability. So if our revenue, like we went through a pandemic where, you know, revenue can, you know, disappear, or it can be, you know, unstable. But if you have enough cash, you can withstand those kinds of fluctuations. Also, for cash flow, if you have cash, you don't have to worry as much about every six months running out of cash when payroll comes by and, you know, comes up and you haven't received your property tax revenue yet, because that's received in April and October. Key highlights to summarize about the general fund, we see an improvement to the city's ending fund balance and cash reserves. And again, with cash, if cash is, if we have enough cash as far as meeting that threshold, typically that means everything up, everything is stronger. So your fund balance, which is a different kind of accounting, would be much higher than sixteen point six seven if your cash alone is at that two-month threshold. And also, when you have enough cash, it takes pressure off of future budgets. Also, we're aligning revenues to be more conservative. We don't want to rely on, on money that's not going to be here. We don't want to spend money we don't have. Targeted expense reductions with minimal service impact. So I think we came up with about three hundred thousand dollars of reductions. I don't think there is any impact to services. And then we introduced a planned contingency. So the strategy reflects the administration's long-term strategy to stabilize the city's financial foundation over the next several years. So that's the general fund. We had just a couple of comments on other funds. First of which would be the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund. So scheduled for December 4th, we're bringing an ordinance to create a Public Safety Sales Tax Fund on October 9th. Council approved increasing the city's sales tax by point oh one percent. Our anticipated revenue would be, from that increase, would be about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the legislation that created this possible tax increase limits or restricts that revenue to being spent on public safety needs. And then our recommendation, or what we envision would be a sworn police officer for two hundred and forty thousand dollars being paid out of this fund, restoring animal control for a hundred thousand dollars. And then there's that hundred and ten thousand dollars for paying expenses related to public defenders. And that would equal the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. As far as the marina is concerned, the major highlight here is an increase in revenue due to for next year due to a rate increase, expected to bring in a million dollars. And capital improvements, that, that amount there, the eight hundred and twenty thousand, under 2026 is related, I mean, they have several projects going. I think that's mostly related to the tenant restroom. And SWIM, really no big headlines here. They, of course, do lots of capital projects. So the expenditures there, the one point eight eight four million and the two point five million, really bring that in line with the 2026 capital improvements plan and represent various projects that they are working on. And that concludes the presentation, and this is the motion.
All right, thank you. So now it's time for the public comment portion of the public hearing. So do we have anybody signed up for this? Nobody has signed up. So I'll ask, is there anybody who did not sign up but who wishes to speak for this portion? Second call, anybody who did not sign up and wishes to speak? And third call, anybody who did not sign up but was to speak. All right. So council, do you have any questions, please? Questions only. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you very much. And I am sorry if I was weak on reading this week, but I thought at some point there was some notion of the homeless cleanup thing being put in SWIM or not.
I'll take that one. So the, yes, we have talked to the council about, you know, moving some of that critical habitat to be the financial responsibility of SWIM. That's something you all will be exploring because there's a rate impact in the beginning of 2026. So as it relates to the homeless encampment we dealt with this past year, that did have to be a general fund expense.
Well, darn. So what is the lifespan of a body cam in 2025? I'm just asking, I mean, if I can get it offline, I'm just, we, we bought these fairly recently, and I'm just... I'm sorry, I just, we did buy them relatively recently and they weren't free, so...
Yeah, absolutely. And these actually were free, which, these were done a hundred percent through a WASPIT grant. So the seventy-seven grand is offset by grant revenue, but it's a five-year, the reason we upgraded them is because our old equipment didn't have a warranty anymore. And by upgrading, we got a new five-year warranty. So they're under a five-year warranty. So the equipment was free and under five-year warranties. So there'll be no expense over five years.
Yeah, no, 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 but, but they last five years. I mean, I'm just saying, you generally expend...
With any police equipment, we have the warranty period for which I can hand them back and get a new one for free. After that, they might last ten years, they might last five years, but then it becomes a city expense, and body cameras are several thousand dollars apiece to replace. So typically, we want to try to keep under warranty, particularly if we can get a grant and get the upgrade for free to the city.
Okay. No, I, I just, just vaguely wanted to get a sense of, thank you, that's more than I, and regarding the contingency, I counted, I stopped counting, you mentioned the word cash thirteen times on one of the slides. So obviously, you're not thinking about cash all that much. And I'm interested, and you were speaking hypothetically about the six-month concern. You were talking about another city regarding, you know, money coming in. But what is the difference between a contingency versus having, I don't know, you know, six million dollars in the bank in, in just the reserve fund? I'm just, just to explain to the public what is the intrinsic...
I'll take that, too, because I'm the one that insisted on the contingency this year. And I'd like to see it get higher.
Is that a fair question?
No, it is a fair question. So right now, things were budgeted so tight that when a seventy-two thousand dollar bill for a homeless encampment comes up, we're scrambling to find that money in the general fund. I'd like to get to a place, ideally, where we have about a two hundred thousand dollar a year contingency. It simply allows a buffer. And your question, Councilmember Harris, of, well, then why isn't that your cash, that your, you know, your, your general fund reserves, your rainy day? Ideally, you don't dip into those because those, there are requirements, you know, from GFOA and best practices on what that minimum should be. And really, those should be used for when it's not just a seventy-two thousand dollar homeless encampment. We've had like the economy bottom out. So I guess I would say this is like your, you had a car fender bender, and you've got this expense that's more than what you normally expected, but you can handle it as opposed to like your house burned down. I think these are not good analogies, but hopefully you're getting what I mean. Like this is like a, we know unexpected things come up. We need to have resilience built into that budget, so we're not scrambling.
This is a, then this is a legal question. Is there any, anything precluding this contingency from being amended to require a supermajority vote?
You mean to spend it?
Indeed, versus four votes. I don't want to get into the discussion now, but I will have a comment. I'm just wondering if that's something one can ask for.
We'll look into that. We'll have to get back to you, but...
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Possibly.
I have a related question then. If it's only fifty thousand dollars and the spending cap for the city manager is fifty thousand dollars, then, so are you saying that this, this authorization for any spending inside of that is outside of your spending?
Correct. Yeah.
Right. Any other questions?
Yeah, one, one other thing. In all of this stuff, you know, I talk about, because I used to watch Get Smurf a lot, of the cone of risk. Amongst all those things, what is your greatest uncertainty for next year? And if, I'm not trying to blindside you, but I just have heard a number of things here that, you know, could be fine. SCORE caught my attention, just insurance and so on. What are the unknown unknowns?
It might be just timing of when bargaining agreements are reached. It could be, and it could just be something that's just unforeseen. So as, as C-Manager mentioned, our budgets are tight, so something unforeseen comes up, it can't, it might not even be for that much. And that can have an impact on our budget.
I'm just, is there one thing just for you that just...
For me?
Yeah, I mean, if that's an unfair question, you know, I, I withdraw it, but I, I would just be curious what amongst these you would...
I would, I would say we are diligently working on square footage tax compliance. And so we, we've done really well through this year, but we have to just make sure we're on that throughout the next year as well.
That caught my eye because I would assume that with Des Moines Creek West coming online at some point, that that would, number would be going up, maybe?
Yeah, it can, you know. And, I mean, I think there's a couple of vacant warehouses that if they be, become occupied, you know, that would also help things out as well.
In which case, it's Christmas in July and you're not, you're not thinking about that, which is really good. Thank you, sir.
Right. Any other questions? Okay. I will now close the public hearing. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Mahoney?
I moved forward the draft ordinance number 25-092 relating to municipal finance and amending the 2025, 2026 biennial budget, adopted ordinance number 1813 to a second reading.
Do I have a second? A second for the deputy mayor and opening for discussion. I would like to begin because we did have a slide with a couple of questions.
Can we go back to that?
It's the council budget slide.
Just ran away very fast.
If you, you want to come back, do you want him to come back up?
No, I can do it. So we're just looking for feedback. I would really recommend you at least consider adding the five thousand dollars. I mean, you can tell your past budgets have been off. So I need feedback on that and then on the NLC request.
So Councilmember Grace Mott-Suey.
Thank you. I'm wondering if this includes the potential adoption of increasing the council wages by the COLA on an annual basis.
It does not. So that, depending on council's action later tonight, that would be an additional amendment. But as you can see from your actuals in '25, we try to budget the salaries and wages to cover kind of the maximum amount of meetings you all could have, but...
And I want to clarify, this is like for all seven of us, it's not for one person.
Correct. Yeah.
Want to make sure everyone knew that.
And actually, if we approve it, it would only end up being for four people for a couple of years, though. Yeah. Okay. And so, do you want us to take votes on this, or?
I just need feedback.
So, okay, feedback, go ahead. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I mean, as, as wonderful as National League of Cities is, I would not spend the dues on that at this point and try to wrap that into a future budget so that we can take more advantage of what is, what National League of Cities can deliver to us, rather than saying, let's dip our toes in the water this time. And so, I would not, but I do support the five thousand. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Harris.
I strongly support joining NLC, even, you know, just having the web thing. One of the reasons I advocated for changing the airport consultant thing is that simply by paying that fee, you get access to the lawyer that we paid a lot of money to come to Des Moines to. She regularly runs these group meetings. And if ever there was a year to have that expertise at a bargain rate, you can attend conferences, you know, that they à la carte, which CTEC does, by the way, and they have benefited from them and their airport issues. But even if you don't, it's a, it's a buffet of expertise that any council member, incoming people can get without having to, you know, go anywhere. It's, it's just there for you. So I think it's a, it's, it's the deal of the century. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mahoney.
Two things on the five thousand dollars, not, don't, not opposed to that training, but I think you need to have some kind of stipulation about how much per council member. Tendency has gone to just one or two, where we could allocate it fairly and give everybody opportunity to get that education. As far as the NLC, it's no, we've, we've had this conversation multiple times. In fact, during this council, I think either it did, it was denied because it lacked a second, or we had an official vote, where I'm surprised it's even there. Couple of things, AWC covers us. It doesn't cover the cost of some of these trips, like next week, they're all going. And it can be expensive, particularly now, and that needs to be captured. And I don't know the details exactly. Somebody like former Mayor Kaplan could probably provide those or somebody else. But one of the reasons we left the NLC was there was abuses to it. And it caused quite a stir in our past. But I think AWC covers our needs as a city our size. I think AWC covers our needs as a city our size, um, and I don't see any need for it.
Okay, any other comments? Uh, Councilmember Grace Matsuwi?
I think it...
Okay, let's see, Councilmember Nutting in a moment, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, I, I think it's a great opportunity for folks who do find themselves elected, uh, here, to enhance some of their skills, to have some sort of training or education that is available to them, I think we already adopted this year a stipulation about how much could go to each council in any given year, and that's something that can be revisited in the future. I would rather see the, the total of around, uh, nine thousand just go into a general amount and not have it be earmarked for, uh, National League of Cities, I appreciate your, your plug, Councilmember Harris, but it'll give us the flexibility to decide, um, how we might use that, or if individuals can use it, so I would just say, call it nine, and don't set aside for, uh, NLC, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Nutting.
My only comments are, is I, uh, um, I agree with, uh, Councilmember Mahoney, on his points.
All right. Uh, uh, I'm gonna double-check with Councilmember Oxker before I call in your second time, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Oxker, did you have, would you weigh in?
I think, uh, Councilmember Grace Matsuwi's point has merit, um, I'm wondering also, though, too, how much of what is covered by National League of Cities is covered by MRSC?
As far as education?
I mean, I can't give you, like, a definitive answer, obviously, MRSC is really Washington-specific, which is amazing, um, NLC is definitely more general, some people would say it's geared much more to, like, large metro areas, but I mean, I know Councilmember Harris says smaller communities around us have found benefit, but I think of it typically as being pretty focused on, like, large metro.
Okay, well, again, I think that, that the idea of putting it in a nonspecific, if we want to put nine thousand in a nonspecific, it's, has merit.
Uh, and I'll weigh in on that, too, it doesn't seem like there's any jumping and cheering over NLC right now, uh, I would be flexible if there were, I would say, yeah, fine, let's try it out, uh, but we don't have the capacity to take advantage of it by traveling to DC with a team or anything, so that's where I feel like it, it doesn't benefit us as much, so I would also be in favor of going ahead and taking that and using it for either further education, we do have a couple of new council members coming aboard, and I feel like other expenditures and advocacy through, I'm not ashamed to say, things like Sound Cities or AWC, uh, can be extremely beneficial, especially in the hyper-local, uh, arena that we serve in, so, um, I would recommend that from myself, okay?
Okay, so I think what I'm hearing, the majority is comfortable with nine thousand, just general professional development for the council?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
In general, okay, we'll make that modification for next reading.
All right. Uh, before we, let's see, we're still in the motion, was there anything else specific that you, any of you wanted? Just for fun to go along with the national trend, the reserve is sixteen point what?
Six-seven.
Six-seven. I couldn't resist.
If you have a kid under twelve, you're doing it.
You're welcome. Okay, uh, just, pardon?
We're, we're hoping that the nine o'clock should have been a little bit.
Okay, uh, so we're, we're still, we're in discussion, uh, raising of hands, any other comments, so, so what we do is, we opened our discussion portion with this, we answered these questions, any other discussion or comments in regard to the motion? Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I, I think that, I appreciate all of the work that has gone into this, and, and clearly, there's been a lot of scrubbing of the budget here, um, it's, you know, it's hard for us to sit up here and say, gosh, I think you nailed it, or, I think you're a little bit off here or there, because we're not in it at the level that you are, um, but I think that the way you've explained everything, um, Jeff, and, you know, kudos to you, uh, for doing that, uh, in a way that everybody can understand what it is, the assumptions that you're making, and the reason you're making for those assumptions are excellent, so, uh, I think that the amendments, uh, that are being proposed, uh, sound good, and I would definitely recommend moving this, uh, forward to a second reading.
All right, Councilmember Harris.
Uh, I would just compliment the, uh, City Manager's original recommendation to join NLC, I have watched the airport committees in...
We just made that.
Please, if you might, I'm, I'm, please, uh, the, if it's a discussion...
It was already, that, that part of the discussion...
For the airport, the, the, the value of NLC is to learn about things outside your filter bubble, I've attended thirteen roundtables...
Councilmember, we just had that discussion, and that was your opportunity, and I'm...
This is for incoming council members, the city...
You could have had that discussion during our discussion time, pick something else.
You have to get information outside this area, thank you.
All right, anything else, any other comments? Councilmember Mahoney.
I think the difficulty, as I mentioned before, is the cumulative inflation rate, twenty-two to twenty-five percent over the last five years, I think the city's done a really good job of figuring out ways we can accommodate that, we actually are trying to do as much as we did before with less, it's a very difficult challenge, and I think my kudos to the city, but it demonstrates the difficulty of this, and, um, and, uh, the biennial process seems to be working, the adjustments seem to be realistic, and I appreciate the good work, and I look forward to approving it on the second reading, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Uh, I have the same, uh, the same kudos for the staff and the scrubbing, uh, impressed, also, uh, no job losses, even with the two-point-five-seven, uh, COLA coming forward, and no impacted services, so that's impressive, and that three-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars, I just, uh, I'm thankful for the work, I have the staff on this. All right, with no other discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, uh, looks like it is unanimous, thank you. All right, on to public hearing number three, uh, this is a land use application abandonment ordinance, first reading, and, uh, the purpose of this agenda item is for City Council to hold a public hearing to consider an ordinance dealing with land use applications that have been abandoned, I will now open the public hearing, and we'll begin with a staff presentation from land use planner Peyton Murphy, welcome Peyton.
Good evening.
Yeah, you're gonna do great.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, um, if we haven't had the chance to meet, I'm Peyton Murphy, I'm one of the staff planners here, uh, tonight, we're bringing forward a proposed code, code update regarding land use application abandonment, and we're gonna try to keep this brief. So within our current code, we do not have a procedure that allows for land use applications to be terminated, uh, this amendment would allow for, uh, termination of land use applications after a hundred-and-eighty days of inactivity. Uh, we recommended, uh, the one-hundred-and-eighty-day period of inactivity after the city has requested additional information, revisions, or corrections, uh, the director has the ability to override this on a case-by-case basis, I've noted here that, uh, similar cities, uh, Renton, Kent, Federal Way, in our local area here, have a hundred-and-eighty-day period as well, um, abandoned applications will require a new submittal, so no reinstatements, it's, it's final, once it's considered abandoned, you'll have to start back over, um, section two of this, uh, proposal then codifies that, um, in DMMC eighteen-twenty-oh-nine-five, as termination of processing of land use applications, and that's kind of within our existing land use review procedures section in the code. Um, establishing a process to terminate applications would allow for better organization of projects on the city staff side, as well as promoting continued progress on permitting and encourage development to be completed in a timely manner, um, so in all, this would just help streamline development activities and alleviate some of the burden on staff as well. That's what I got, uh...
And this is, uh, Peyton's first presentation, to you also, be nice.
Yes, please.
That's it?
A backup, so...
All right, so it's now time for the public comment portion of this public hearing, do we have anybody who signed up to speak? All right, so is there anyone out in the audience who, uh, did not sign up but wishes to speak into, into this issue? Okay, second call, is there anybody who did not sign up to speak who wishes to speak? And third call, anyone who did not sign up to speak and wishes to speak? Okay, uh, uh, council questions, questions only, please, Councilmember Mahoney and the Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
I've only got four thousand twenty, uh, questions for you. You know, I have one simple one, uh, obviously, if we pass this and when it becomes effective, what's the estimated number of applications we currently have that would be, um, I guess, ended or vacated, or kicked to the curb?
Yeah, so my answer is, the, the clock would start once it's, we can't retroactively have them, uh, be considered abandoned, it would start at the time of inaction and then, um, or...
Six months later?
...being enacted, and then, um, it'd be six months later.
And I'm sure you have a plethora of them already, and whatever would be incurred or fall into the one-hundred-and-eighty days past that, uh, I was just wondering if there was a number.
I didn't run a report, so I don't have that number for you.
No worries, I'm sure it's, uh, it's, it's considerable, it's, it's clean to the desk, as you mentioned before, I was just wondering the number, thank you.
Councilmember Harris, oh, did I, did you raise your hand earlier?
Thank you.
Okay, so Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, and then Councilmember Harris, and then, okay.
Marvelously brief presentation. Um, it sounds like this is a fairly common practice with cities around us, are we just an outlier, or is it, is it much more mixed?
Yeah, well, go ahead. Uh, it, it seems to be consistent with most cities, uh, around us, at least having some form of application abandonment procedure.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Harris.
Um, thank you, as a practical matter, um, I'm concerned about the, the ramp-up phase, should I be, I mean, in other words, like with the where, with the square footage tax, um, uh, I'm just thinking about, you know, when people get a letter, or, um, what will be the process of, do you anticipate any kind of pushback or friction, or, um, you know, uh, do you have a schedule, or is this just sort of a common thing, that people get the letter and, you know, everything's fine?
It's pretty common, I think most of the ones that are gonna be out there are probably pretty, think that their application has already expired, because they're years old, so I don't expect to have too big of an issue.
Excellent answer, thank you.
Councilmember Grace Matsuwi.
Actually, Councilmember Harris asked my question, which is, like, what is the mechanism for letting people know, so I appreciate it, thank you.
We also expect to have it on the new applications, so it'll be informed at the, the get-go for a new, new applicant starting.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Nutting, you're good up there? Okay, all right, with no further questions, I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Councilmember Mahoney, are you gonna take that, you look like you were?
Um...
Okay, yeah, oh, do you want to take it, Deputy Mayor?
I'm looking for the motion.
We are.
Next time, I will write it out, that was, yep, uh, the motion is just to, uh, passed to a second reading on December fourth.
Would you like me to read it? Okay?
I move to pass draft ordinance twenty-five dash zero-nine-zero to a second reading on December fourth, twenty-twenty-five.
I have a second, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz for the second, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, it is seven-zero, thank you, and great presentation, thanks Peyton. All right. Public hearing fourteen-twenty-seven, I'm just kidding, co-living housing ordinance, first reading, the purpose of this agenda item is for the, for the City Council to hold a public hearing to consider a co-living housing ordinance, I will now open the public hearing, and we'll begin with a staff presentation, land use planner, Alicia Jacobs, and I think this is your first time too, right? Yeah?
No.
Oh, you've done it before, that's right.
She did those great visuals for the, uh, meeting, but...
Yeah, oh, that's right.
No pressure. This one's not as exciting, but, okay, well, good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm gonna talk about the co-living housing ordinance. Um, so what is HB nineteen-ninety-eight, it's a new state legislation, um, the Growth Management Act requires a city to comply with the, with HB nineteen-ninety-eight and the RCW, and the purpose is to explore co-living housing as a way to accommodate housing needs for the state's growing population. So what is co-living housing? Um, it means a residential development with sleeping units that are independently rented and lockable, and provide living and sleeping space, and residents share kitchen facilities with other sleeping units in the building. Um, some context, it's a state mandate, you have to comply by December thirty-first, um, there's a housing crisis, the, that it's increasing rent and eviction rates, and co-living housing may be a housing type that can help combat this problem, and this is not a new housing concept, co-living housing has been here in the US for a while, and it's had a resurgence in the Puget Sound region. So, what are the benefits of co-living, it increases housing supply in the city, it offers a more affordable market rate housing type, it reduces sprawl and environmental impacts, it's a great option for infill development, it fosters social interaction, and it builds community. So what does it look like, it could look like new builds, conversions, and mixed-use Um, so for the draft ordinance, we're proposing to create a definition for co-living housing in corresponding living, in corresponding co-living terms. For zoning, um, we've updated the permitted uses table, um, to allow co-living in twelve zones, and we've excluded single-family residential zones and a couple of other zones. Co-living housing development standards cannot be more restrictive than those required for other types of multifamily residential uses in the same zone, and sleeping units count as a quarter of a dwelling unit, these are the main points of the, main standards for the co-living housing. For parking, a minimum compliance with HB nineteen-ninety-eight, it'd be a quarter off-street parking space required per sleeping unit, and no off-street parking required within a half-mile walking distance of a major transit stop. For process and admin, minimal compliance would be, we can only require a review note, a review notice or public meeting for co-living, if it's required for other residential uses in the same location, and it may be included in affordable housing incentive pro, programs, it, per state law, cannot be excluded. Um, so we have, these are our next steps, we completed the SEPA checklist in determination, um, we're looking for council adoption by December thirty-first, and we're wondering if you have any feedback or questions that you'd like us to look into.
All right, thank you. So it's now time for the public comment portion of the public hearing, do we have anybody sign up? Okay, so is there anybody in the audience who, uh, did not sign up, who wishes to speak onto this issue? Anyone who did not, second call, anyone who did not sign up who wishes to speak? Third call, anyone who did not sign up who wishes to speak? All right, so now it's time for council questions, questions only, uh, okay, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, do, do we have any projections out on how many of the units, or, or the buildings will be conversions versus new builds, um, what's expected over, say, the next five years?
We haven't had any interest or anyone reach out to us, so we don't know that we'll, if we'll see any.
And then my other question is, for the existing buildings that we have in the zones that you just showed us, um, do we have a count of any kind as to, um, you know, how many residents, if they were converted, as they exist now, how many residents more they, that could be accommodated by that? And is it possible to even come up with that?
That would be a tough calculation, because that would be something that a, a contractor would have to take the building and go through the building code... and go through the building code and do a calculation to see how many rooms, minimum room size and things like that. So that would be a really tough number to come up with, to go from whatever's existing to how many rooms under co-living could fit. So that wouldn't be, it'd be very specific to each building.
So if it's a con, a conversion, it wouldn't just simply be a question of saying, this already has six rooms, in structure, that could be converted, in, instead of whatever exists?
I mean, I guess you could, because you'd be taking out a kitchen and putting a kitchen somewhere else, you'd have to build it, so you, I guess, take one, like if it's an apartment complex, you'd take one apartment out and turn it into a common kitchen or something like that, and the rest would be rooms, so that would be a possibility. I'm not sure what the benefit to someone like that, because the benefit is making it lower income, so you'd be wanting smaller rooms, otherwise you'd just keep it as a rental, rentable apartment. So, I think if someone was converting something, maybe trying to create smaller spaces to create more spaces.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get some sense of
Yeah.
how much difference is this going to make? But thank you, I appreciate your, your candor.
Any other questions, Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, I, you know, read through this, and I, the more I, I was struggling to see how it differs as a practical matter from what we're already doing, and a lot of, um, so this doesn't, I mean, other than you having to create another one of those lovely tables in chapter eighteen, um, this is not any kind of particular challenge for the building person, or, um, just in terms of safety, code compliance, just, they know how to do this, because we already do it to a large extent, right?
The only unu, the only unusual part to it is co-living is not a building code type, but it, it's similar to single-room occupancies or boarding houses, which is a building code type. So it, it's going, with, with all of these new legislations that have come down, it has been a bit of a challenge from, uh, zoning to a building code conversion and how we're doing things. Um, so there is some challenges, but everyone's figuring it out, board, like I said, like it showed other terms, boarding houses, there are building codes for boarding houses, so we're ge, we're guessing that that's what we'll be looking at when someone submits a co-living. We'd be plan-checking it under the building code as a, similar to a boarding house.
Yeah, no, I'm just thinking of it just more as an administrative, just busy work.
Yeah, administrative is just another use, no, it's not any more difficult than any other use process from multifamily.
Very good, thank you so much.
Councilmember Oxiger.
So this is, this is not going to be applicable in the single-family residence zones?
That's correct, the state law only requires us to, um, make it permitted in any zone that allows six units per lot. So we don't have to, the council can choose to make it permitted in additional areas, but the intent is it's a multifamily use, and so it wouldn't be required to be permitted in a single-family zone.
Okay, but it's also, one of the examples was for students, and I'm thinking around the college. What does this do for our ability to house more students around the college?
So it is similar to, to a dorm, and that is a separate zone under the IC, which is master-planned, so those uses would be allowed in a master plan already, under, that's how we do our dorm, that's how a dorm would be permitted. And those aren't specifically as a master plan, since a master plan can do different kinds of proposals, it would come back to council under a master plan.
And is this compatible with the transit-oriented development?
There, there's a separate transit-oriented development bill that I haven't quite dug into, because that'll come back in a few years, um, so I'm not a hundred percent sure how that combined, how it's combined, but any transit-oriented development that allows mixed use and multifamily, this would be compatible, because we have to allow it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nutting.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so other than the, uh, six units, is there a square footage, uh, requirement or restriction on any of that?
In terms of the room size?
Uh, well, in, in terms of, sorry, I'm trying to get, uh, in, in terms of whatever can be converted.
So there, there's not necessarily, uh, the other size restrictions would deal with the normal zone size, so like setbacks and height, that's where you get your normal multifamily dimension restrictions, and this would have the same restrictions. In terms of conversion, the other, the conversion restrictions would be left to building code. We did not put any additional size restrictions in the code to put other limits within there.
Got you, okay, that's what I was asking, thank you.
All right, uh, couple of questions for me, is there anything prop, in the ordinance, proposed ordinance, that goes beyond the state requirements? I mean, we're responding to
Any additional.
Okay, and so the entire code amendment is basically compliance?
Correct.
Yeah, and, um, and I think I saw, if we don't act, the statute will supersede and invalidate any conflicting thing that we have anyway, right?
Correct, it would just be harder to enforce, because it would be someone trying to figure out which zones complied, just because it would be a nebulous supersede. It's much easier to have a city code.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, looks like we're done with questions, I'll now close the public hearing. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Mahoney.
I move to pass draft ordinance twenty-five dash zero-nine-zero to a second reading on December fourth, two thousand twenty-five.
By the second? Second, Councilmember Grace Matsui, any discussion? All right, no discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. And it looks like it's seven-zero, great, thank you for the presentation. All right. It is seven-thirty, okay. So now we're on to the new business segment of our agenda for tonight, and we're gonna begin with a presentation in regard to our capital improvements plan. The purpose of this item is for the council to consider the two thousand twenty-six to two thousand thirty-one capital improvements plan, and we'll have a presentation with Finance Director Jeff Friend.
Good evening again, Mayor.
Good evening.
Um, so we're presenting the two thousand twenty-six to two thousand thirty-one capital improvements plan. A capital improvements plan is essentially a near-term work plan and a long-term wish. And I do want to mention also that if a, a citizen or resident, member of the public, uh, is interested in, like, it sees as a project or hears about a project the city is doing and wonders how that's being funded, uh, the finance, um, department webpage does have a page for capital improvements plan where you can find the documents. And in the plan, there are individual sheets for each project where you can go, and you can look and see what the funding sources are for, uh, whatever you're interested in. So this, uh, presentation, this is gonna be a quick, uh, financial overview. Uh, last week, uh, we brought this presentation, uh, with, uh, also slides for, uh, various projects from Public Works in the Marina, to the Committee of the Whole, um, and then tonight, we're just gonna do a quick, uh, financial overview. So, uh, this is the headline slide, so the two thousand twenty-six to two thousand thirty-one CIP, uh, contains eighty-seven projects, uh, with, uh, funding of a hundred and seventy-five million, two hundred and seventy-five thousand. And as I mentioned last week, uh, of course, those are just headlines, uh, they don't tell the whole story. So there are, um, nuances and, um, different statuses of funding and projects, uh, that are the details that make up the story. So CIP expenditures, uh, secured funding, so not all funding is secured. So the hundred and seventy-five million is not like, we have a hundred and seventy-five million dollars in the bank. Uh, but we have secured a hundred and twenty-three million, fourteen thousand, uh, for capital projects. And this is where I should also mention that funding, uh, for projects tends to be grants, it can be bonds, uh, it can be real estate excise tax that is restricted, uh, for capital projects. The general fund, which is for operations, does not participate in this, there might be a, a, a small project that maybe happened over in an engineering building, uh, with their HVAC that the general fund has to pay for. Other than that, um, that funding is for operations and the general fund, not for capital projects. Uh, unsecured grants, so, um, we look for funding, uh, and then apply for grants, uh, those grants can be secured, but before you find out, those are unsecured grants, meaning you've applied or you've identified them, but you haven't obtained that funding yet. And in this plan, that's about forty-six and a half million dollars. And then there's also unidentified funding, where, uh, there's a project that's been identified, uh, we haven't identified the funding sources yet. However, those are included in the plan, because if you wanna apply for a grant, one of the questions the grantors may ask is, is that in your capital improvements plan? And you wanna affirm that it is, and so those projects that are part of the wish list are included in the capital improvements plan. So that, uh, all those added together is the hundred and seventy-five, uh, million, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, so this is the overview year by year of expenditures, you can see the total cost at the end there, uh, the grand total is the hundred and seventy-five million. Uh, you also may notice, the first, uh, column with numbers is two thousand twenty-four and prior. So even a portion of that hundred and seventy-five million, we've already spent on projects, um, before two thousand twenty-five, which is about thirty-two point seven million. Uh, there are major categories, there are five categories of projects. Uh, first one is, uh, buil, building facility projects. Uh, that is, uh, facilities that are just, uh, they're getting repaired. Uh, Marina capital improvements are capital, uh, projects that the Marina pays for. Municipal capital improvements is much like the first category, but this is more, uh, projects that are building something new or adding an improvement that's significant, uh, to something that exists already. Uh, surface water management, uh, capital, that is a capital projects done by the Surface Water Management Fund, and then lastly, transportation projects. You can see for two thousand twenty-six, um, the grand total, uh, with expenditures would be about thirty-three point eight million dollars. Uh, about half of that is, uh, in that municipal capital improvements category, about five million in the surface water management category. Projects overview, so, um, as there's different kinds of funding, uh, there's, projects are also either fully funded or unfunded. Uh, so fully funded projects, we have about sixty-eight, partially funded, where maybe we have some funding, haven't secured all of it. Uh, fifteen projects, uh, fall into that category, and then four are just completely unfunded. Uh, projects are also closing, um, so you might start a new project, and you also have, uh, projects that close, uh, such as the fieldhouse, uh, play equipment there, uh, if you know the, we're very happy that slide is complete. It's funny this week, it was funny last week. Uh, so this is the list, there's a lot of, uh, pipe upgrade projects, uh, Marina dredging, uh, Redondo floats, uh, the Redondo restroom, and then, uh, project related to Soundview Park. Uh, so the total budget related to projects closing, uh, in two thousand twenty-five is seventeen, about seventeen point four million dollars. Um, projects, uh, for next year, and, and I also wanna comment, you know, with projects, you're talking about timing, so some of these may have started, and then they have scheduled expenditures for next year. They might be starting next year, or they might have, be in design, and, you know, more work will happen after two thousand twenty-six, but as far as the plan is concerned, um, we see the five categories here again. Um, municipal capital improvements total, again, is, is seventeen point one million, with that five million, uh, for surface water management, and, uh, the schedule shows the details of which projects make up those numbers. Uh, the project IDs, those are key to navigating your way through, uh, the plan if you happen to go open it. Everything is organized by these categories, uh, and then alphabetically, um, well, the categories, I believe, are alphabetical, but it's also alphabetical through, uh, inside each category, so if you wanna look up the Founder's Lodge, that project ID is your key to, um, finding that project page with all the information. And that brings us to the motion.
All right, so council, do you have any questions before the motion? Uh, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz and then Councilmember Harris.
Jeff, there was a, a citywide HVAC replacement and roof replacement line. And then below that was the police HVAC. Why are those two different things? I just.
That might be a Mike Slevin question.
Just caught my eye.
He's been coasting anyway during this meeting.
So the, uh, Deputy Mayor, the, the, the police facilities project has been separated out from that, because it's a, it's a complete rehab done, and the others are, are smaller piecemeal-type fixes? So that's kinda what we're to, doing there, the, the roof replacement is, is as needed, but the, um, police facility is already past its life, so we're trying to find the funding to make sure we make that happen. Right now, we're maintaining it, and we're increasing some increased maintenance costs.
Thank you.
Councilmember Maho, oh, Councilmember Harris, I think you're next.
Um, yeah, this is totally by-the-by, and I can take the que, the answer offline, but I got a question from a resident, um, just today. Why is it called the Marina Steps and Promenade? Or is it Promenade, is that what you say? Yeah, where, I, I honestly don't know where the promen, promen, is it promenade?
It was probably, um, just inherited historically, that maybe at one point in time, four years ago, it was referred to as that, um, and it didn't evolve into just the steps, that would be my best guess on that.
Okay, but there isn't like a functional, I'm, I'm probably, this is a, I, I just wanted to know if it was actually a functional piece of it, because that's what I was asked, but anyway, that's, uh, there was a, there was, there was a promenade project back four hundred years ago, that's why.
I can follow up on that and let you know offline.
I do have some input on that, because there are steps and a promenade in the project. The zigzag is a promenade where you walk, and then the straight down is a step, so there are two, two walking portions.
The zigzag is the promenade?
Zigzag is the promenade, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
There you go.
Something every day.
Uh, okay, qu, other questions, Councilmember Mahoney.
The, uh, Midway Park, um, piece of this, or was it, I wanted to, acquisition, that is, was mentioned last week from Anthony's report, that even with some of the, the federal shutdown and him coming back online, we may or may not get that money.
So, uh, um, Councilmember Mahoney, so the, the acquisition has been, has been accomplished for the, for the parcels. So we have, we have the property. What we're trying to do is, is get, uh, federal funding to actually build the park, the park is at a ninety percent design right now. Um, so that's, that's what we're working on, is those levels of grants.
Acquisition, and I'm.
Yeah, the acquisition has, has been completed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you good up there, Councilmember Nutting? Okay, all right, so that's our questions, do I have a motion? Uh, uh, I'm gonna take Deputy Mayor Steinmetz for the motion.
I move to adopt draft rel, resolution twenty-five dash zero-nine-three approving the City of Des Moines twenty, twenty-six through, uh, two thousand thirty-one capital improvements plan.
The second, uh, Count, uh, Councilmember, uh, Nutting for the second. All right, discussion on this? Uh, Councilmember Harris.
Um, I wanna, it sounds trivial, but I wanna thank, uh, for, um, just even putting these things in alphabetical order, so I can, um, I'll just, my input on this is that these are point in time, and because I've been watching for a while, I see projects now that are twice as much as they were, say, five years ago. Same project, but you don't know that, because you're only looking at it as it exists today, and that makes it extremely difficult for electives and planning if you're always thinking of it, oh, yeah, that's always been the project. It's like, no, the same project, we could have done it at this point, and it would have been half as much, that's it.
Okay, Councilmember Mahoney.
Uh, just my comment to that is, I know that a lot of the projects, we've had different leadership in those particular groups, they've been modified and changed. The inflation I spoke to, um, is apparent, and then it's also a set of priorities, and also funding. Having these on the capital improvement prop, plan is what allows us a lot of times to get the grant funding. But, if you gotta wait ten years to get something done because it fits in line with something else, yes, the cost is gonna go up. It's just a reality of the situation, but it's how council aligns the priorities on these projects and when they get done. It's, it's, it's really that simple, thank you.
All right, any further dis, any further discussion? All right, so, uh, thanks you, thanks for helping us on this wish wishlist list. Another, another cultural reference, all right. Uh, all in favor, raise your right hand. Uh, seven-zero, all right. So next up, we have, uh, an ILA for coordinated SAM review and legal services. The purpose of this item is for the council to consider an interlocal agreement with other cities with regard to addressing the SAM. And we have a presentation with our community. And we have a presentation with our community development director, Rebecca Deming. Thank you.
Hi, Mayor, Council. We're here for the interlocal agreement. We originally had an inter, four-city interlocal agreement signed back, started in 2018. The purpose was to review, analyze, and respond to the environmental process related to the SAM, including the CIPA and NEPA process. This partnership was between the cities, and it wasn't about a specific consultant or scope of work. It established a process for the selection and funding of these consultants. The original one had a contract management with the city of CTAC and fiscal management by the city of Burien. That one originally expired December thirty-first, 2020. There was an amendment in March 2020, which changed that contract management to the city of Des Moines. And then we did a new ILA in 2024, which changed the expiration to the completion of the SAM, which was anticipated December thirty-first, 2027. This new ILA adds legal services. We learned that Normandy Park is not participating, so it is now a three-city ILA instead of a four-city ILA. The duration is still through the completion of the SAM, but we added anticipation to 2028. We're all just guessing, but our new guess is an extra year, although I still think it's going to be longer. Contract and fiscal management, we moved it to one city with the city of CTAC. This one again adds legal counsel, talks about it's the best interest of the parties to jointly hire legal counsel with expertise in environmental law to support a legal challenge to either the NEPA conclusions, the CIPA conclusions, or both. It has clarification on how the funding is going to be split, the original one just said. We'll talk about it in a separate letter. This one actually words the funding split within the ILA. And then it talks about communication with the consultant. The estimated costs for legal services, at least for this initial discussion on NEPA, we have an estimated expenditure for the three cities, about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. CTAC will coordinate any invoicing and payments under this ILA on behalf of the three cities. Based on our current population, which would be updated annually based on the Office of Financial Management, we're at about twenty-eight percent, so that amount is ninety-six thousand dollars if we were to move forward with that full amount. If we move forward with an NEPA appeal, the initial NEPA appeal deadline is November twenty-fourth. An initial petition filing for review and a request for stay of the project is only estimated at a thousand dollars. That just preserves our right to move forward with an appeal. There's no commitment to additional appeal expenses with the attorney. As was mentioned earlier, the Airport Advisory Committee did recommend us move forward. We would return to council to talk about the strategy that the legal has come up with. And in early 2026, to decide if we wanted to move forward with the more expensive costs that it would take the legal team to put forward the actual bulk of the appeal before we expended those costs. But due to the shortness in time, we would be, we're looking at moving forward with just the quick, preserve the right to the appeal. And we are recommending that you move forward with the motion to adopt the ILA. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Great, thank you. Time for questions. Questions only. Councilmember Harris.
So we've already put in sixty-nine of the ninety-six estimated cost share. I mean, we, we have sixty, it, maybe that, you're not the person for that, but, I mean, is, is the ninety-six estimated, or our twenty-eight percent, is that already, is the sixty-nine part of that, or is that something separate?
So that is something separate. Some of the funds, because some of the monies, we had some funds from the original environmental services versus this. So I think there's some, a little bit of some confusion over how much was spent before, how much was spent now. So there's, I don't think there's necessarily, there's been money that was set aside sixty-nine towards revenues, but there's not necessarily, there's still funds that were spent previously under the environmental that we did for, to respond for the NEPA comments under the previous ILA.
Well, I can take the answer offline, but I'd be interested to know how much I. So Burien spent nine thousand of that. I'm just trying to get an accounting of how much of that original sixty-nine versus how much of this three hundred and fifty thousand is, is new money that we're going to have to consider.
So the, so you're correct that there was sixty-nine thousand dollars set aside for, let's just call it the kind of SAM effort. We have spent to date nine thousand in a little odd amount, so let's just call it nine thousand. So we have basically sixty thousand remaining. Additional expenses, which Rebecca kind of gave some rough estimates for, we don't have budgeted right now. So what our intent is, is to right now file the paperwork to keep our standing. But I think Rebecca and I would like to get a better understanding from the legal team if the council approves the ILA tonight on sort of what really, what does that really look like, what is included, what is that strategy? And bring that back to council before we really commit expenditures beyond that because I know there's sensitivity to this really just ballooning.
What is the, it's a thousand bucks to file the paperwork? How much time does that buy you before you actually have to have some kind of legal case?
Can you go back to that slide, Rebecca?
What I'm, what I'm getting at is that you pay a thousand bucks by eleven-twenty-four, right? And how much time does that buy you before you actually have to have the strategy in place?
So I'm pulling, I'm sorry, I'm pulling my notes up real quick.
Or am I being too?
No, you're, so the, the next step would be filing an opening brief, and that would be due with, at the shortest time, eighty days. It could be longer.
Eighty days from Thanksgiving for eleven-twenty-four.
Correct.
Okay, so we've.
But they need time to do that, so there's, it's a little bit shorter, so let's say, let's say sixty days, just to.
Well, no, because I'm, I'm like, and I'm sorry because I have trouble seeing that, but basically, you pay a thousand bucks, you, you file a document with the court, and then you've got eighty days before you have to file another document, which is.
Correct. But we need sixty days to make a decision so that there's time to do the work that's needed to file.
But then, but that's exactly my point, is that then there needs to be a meeting ahead of that.
Correct.
With all three cities, and we all have to agree on the master plan, such as it is. And that's a tight, that's pretty tight with the holiday.
Yeah, I would say ma- master plan with an asterisk, right? Because we're talking about NEPA, which I think everybody agrees has been a very disappointing process because of changes at the federal level. So I feel like there's sort of two master plans. There's really this NEPA issue ahead of us right now, which has some real constraints, again, because of federal policy changes. But I think there's a whole other discussion that's hopefully more fruitful when we talk about the CIPA. So I, I think they're kind of two parallel paths, if that helps.
Well, Dr. Evil doesn't have an asterisk at the master plan, but I'm just, okay, no, that's, that's fine. But what, this is worth simply thinking about the, this NEPA thing. And I guess, yeah, sure, that answered everything. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz?
Yeah, if I can just share, because I deal with legal issues all the time. You, you would probably at that, at that eighty-day point have previously filed a brief for an extension of time to get your ultimate brief in, and there certainly would be a good basis if you were representing three different cities who had to come to that. And so I don't think it's as, anywhere near as tight as it is feared.
We're expecting more time. That was just the worst-case scenario.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? All right, do I have a motion? Councilmember Mahoney?
I move to approve the interlocal agreement between the cities of Burien, Des Moines, and CTAC for legal and environmental review in connection with the NEPA and CIPA evaluations of the CTAC Airport Sustainable Airport Master Plan, and authorize the city's manager to sign substantially in the form as attached.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll give the second to Councilmember Nutting. Discussion. Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you. I just want to also thank our Airport Advisory Committee for taking this under consideration and forming a recommendation to deliver to us, which said that they were approve and recommend us adding those legal services and to go with the existing ILA. That's one of the very reasons why we instituted having the Airport Advisory Committee, so thank you for that work.
Any other, Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, this is absolutely terrible, and that's no disparagement against, but the Century Agenda was announced in 2012, not 2015, as I've heard, or 2016 or 2018. And this is tantamount to basically, it's not even like a tax extension. It's like, it's eleven fifty-nine, or it's five AM, and you have a term paper. And whether or not we can get a legal brief in, the thousand bucks, the eighty days, or whatever, the fact that our cities, there's this term in engineering demolition by neglect. You fail by simply benign, just ignoring the problem until it falls down. We have had thirteen years to take these issues seriously, and I am concerned that it is so political that we have not done even a baseline. And I will see just thirty-seven hundred bucks to have access to the same attorney that came here. If you don't even give advisory committee members who come in just off the street every couple of years, if you don't even give people access to something beyond, there's no, there's no resource in the state of Washington. I, I heard this thing about the port being sort of Voldemort or whatever. The port is simply an agent, it's a supercharged water district. It represents the will of the state of Washington. It's what the county, the state, they want the airport to expand uncontrollably.
Councilmember, could you narrow, just a moment? No, I'm going to interrupt you for a second. Could you just focus on, on the support of the item?
People, you have to get information from a wider world than just the MRSC or anything you're going to find here because there is no will, other than the city of CTAC, just look at what they do. They are willing to actually investigate beyond here. But if you don't investigate beyond this small.
Do you support the ILA or not? Please support your decision. Do you support the?
You're not going to tell me what to say or not say. Thank.
I am, all right. Thank you. So any other discussion? Councilmember Mahoney?
The level reset here is that in nineteen ninety-four, they decided not to seek a second airport, and we've been punished for it ever since, and we got the third runway and so forth. I'm very disappointed in the city of Normandy Park. They should be part of this. All we'd have to do is change the runways from east to west, and it'd be a different story, wouldn't it? The fact is, is we're subscribing to a service that all over the nation is the experts in this type of field. They give us our best legal response. And by using other cities, we don't have to shell out the bill by ourselves. We share the cost. I really appreciate the Airport Committee. That's one of the reasons why I wanted it created, is because I think they looked at it in an objective way and came to the same conclusion I did. And so I'm going to support this. It's the wisest move we can do in this current situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right. I want to say ditto to Councilmember Grace Matsui's comments. I appreciate, this is exactly why we asked you to do this work, so thank you for your coming forward. All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero. Okay, thank you very much. All right. We're going to go ahead and take this, this item and then have a break. So the next item is the City Council Compensation Framework Discussion. The purpose of this item is for council to consider options for the council member, for council member compensation. And we're entertaining a presentation by our HR Director, Adrian Johnson Newton.
Good evening, Council. My name is A.J. Johnson Newton. I am the Assistant City Manager for the City of Des Moines. And tonight, I'm here to summarize the agenda item in your packet regarding city council compensation. You may find it helpful to turn to the agenda item because I do not have a PowerPoint tonight. It's on page two fifty-six, if you're looking. So on October twenty-third, the council asks staff to return with information on a potential future cost of living adjustment for council compensation. And so tonight, staff is seeking direction on whether the council wants to adjust compensation, and if so, which of the allowable structures you would like staff to draft into an ordinance. If no action is taken, the current compensation remains in place until the council chooses to revisit it. So a little bit of background, current compensation is set for council in our municipal code, four point oh eight, point oh two oh, for anyone who wants to go look it up, and has not, and has not been adjusted since nineteen ninety-nine. And so currently, it is a per-meeting stipend of two hundred and fifty dollars. And for anyone in the mayor role, it's three hundred and fifty dollars per meeting with a cap of up to forty meetings. And so state law allows council compensation to be set in two ways. One is by ordinance, or two is by an independent salary commission. Per council direction tonight, we're just exploring the, the ordinance option. So two important things to know about the ordinance before I turn it over to you for a discussion. So one, any ordinance must set a fixed dollar amount or fixed percentage. So basically, what that means in plain language is that you could not tie the rate to a variable figure like COLA. So the council would need to set either a flat dollar amount or a set percentage. On the second part of that is that the changes, if the council elects to update the compensation structure, they can't take effect during a current term. And so they can only begin at the start of the next term for that seat, whether it's filled by a new member or a reelected incumbent. So I'll walk you through that example. So if we use the 2025 election cycle as an example, if the ordinance is adopted after the November twenty-twenty-five election, but before January first, 2026, newly elected members would receive the new rate on Jan. one, 2026. Reelected incumbents would not receive it until their next term begins in 2030, and members not up for election would remain at the current rate until their next term begins in 2028. If adopted after Jan. one, 2026, the effective dates shift to the 2028 and 2030 cycle. And so in the agenda item, I also have a chart in there that recaps that information. Thank you.
Okay, so I do have one question is, do you know what the average CPI is over the last twenty years? Is that easy to find, like ask AI or something?
I don't have that, but yeah, I definitely know a finance director who can get that calculated rate, and I can provide that.
We're talking.
And he has left the room.
Oh, no. Okay, questions? We'll begin, Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you for the presentation. Do you have a sense, and I'm not going to ask you for a specific figure, is the city of Des Moines council compensation rates in the middle of the range of surrounding cities, in the low part of the range, in the high part of the range?
I did not do a formal survey, so I think any answer I give you would be anecdotal. For the few cities I looked at, again, not statistically valid, we were quite low. If the council would like that information as part of the consideration, I'm happy, along with the, the COLA average, to provide that to the council.
Well, I was a little bit stunned to hear you say that these hadn't been updated since nineteen ninety-nine. Is that, that's how many, like thirty-four, how many years ago? So I'm going to guess, I would love to have that information, but I'm going to guess that we lag. Municipalities in similar size. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, I would, I would recommend that we take whatever the average is of CPI over the last twenty years
And it was so low that it was not even worth reporting, basically.
Eighty-nine cents before taxes.
Eighty-nine cents before taxes, and so, no, I don't believe that that is the incentive, but I'm talking about reducing a barrier. If my time is worth a certain amount and I'm choosing between putting more money into a job that pays me wages that will get my family ahead, or, gosh, I can give all this time to the city for free, or next to nothing, then I'm probably going to choose putting food on the table with a higher minimum wage. So, it's about reducing barriers, which I hope has the outcome of increasing the opportunity for more folks to take on public service as a, as a goal that they have. I was talking to someone today, and I was describing the absolute privilege that I know that I have to have a flexible work schedule and to have an employer who supports me in the civic engagement. And there are a lot of people who do not have those privileges. But this is something that I can control, that I think a minimal, less than a hundred and eighty dollars per year per council member is just a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Harris.
I can imagine a better, uh, incentive structure. It would sound self-serving, but, um, other cities have reimbursement for involvement in committees, in travel. Unfortunately, we did have some, uh, you know, situations many years ago where, you know, people would go somewhere and say, "Yeah, yeah, I was macking in the city." Um, but, um, I am truly concerned that, um, various committees at, at SCA, um, struggle to achieve a quorum, and that's because you gotta schlepp out to, um, you know, Seattle or whatever. Uh, and, um, I certainly have spent, you know, (laugh) tens of thousands of dollars attending, um, meetings with the airlines and the, because there are rooms where the Port of Seattle tells you what they're gonna do. And there should be somebody from the city, if it's not me, it should be the city manager, definitely, to see how this works, 'cause C-TAC is there. Um, there should be a better incentive structure that compensates people, the mayor, for all of this schlepping. Unfortunately, we created a trust problem many years ago where it's essentially like, everything is binary. It's like, and the fact is, we all put in different amounts of effort, and it should be allowable to recognize that and, um, figure something out like that. Apparently, we can't, but that, if you wanna get people involved in the region, um, you know, you have to have a different incentive structure, not just a per-meeting fee. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'll, we'll add a couple of comments. I don't think even a, a three percent is really that meaningful or that noticeable. This is just something over time. If there would've been, um, a quasi-cola beginning in nineteen ninety-nine, or even somewhere along the way, it would just be a little more equitable and keep up with things like how much gas costs. I mean, so, in a way, I look at this as reimbursing for these, you know, lunch out, coffee out, tea out, a hundred bucks to this foundation and, and all that. It just, it would, it would more add up over time, I think. Uh, that would just help keep up with reducing barriers. And there are a few other elected positions in this region that, um, you know, commissioners for this and that, that offer nice little benefits for a lot less time. So, you know, every little bit helps. Okay, so, I am, are you looking for direction? Are you looking for a motion? Would, would you, are you looking for a direction to bring something back?
Yeah, if, if the council would like us to draft an ordinance, then we need direction on, um, whether you wanna flatten them out or percentage, what that percentage would be.
Okay, I mean, I will just do the C-Motion. Would you like to make a motion for... Here, oh, excuse me. Go ahead.
I'm intrigued by the idea of the, the compensation for additional meetings, that sort of thing. Do we have, is there any information that you can bring back to the council as far as, do any other cities in the area, uh, compensate their...
Mm-hmm, they do.
But I think, could we get a, a study on that? I mean, we don't have to pass this now.
No, we don't, so, would, so, we could do this, we could ask, uh, the council for a new agenda item with a head nod, uh, three head nods for information, uh, about compensation, uh, for what we, we call it, not really per diem, but per-meeting, to consider. Is that... Okay? Uh, Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, I would strongly support that. And again, I'm not trying to be self-serving, but there are models at our peer cities around, and n-not just meetings per se. Again, there's a, I understand there are trust issues, but there should be, uh, there's, you know, we all do incur real costs. And I find that much fairer than the per-meeting thing, because, um, the more you're out in public, absolutely, you should be, um, your, your costs for schlepping and showing up and being the face of the city should be recognized. And, and I like that in terms of economics, because it just, it puts it right out there that, um, it, it's a trust thing. It's like, yeah, I did this, I did this, and, um, and you get compensated for it. It's, it's the, it's totally equitable.
Okay, so, two motions, like, some information with two motions available to us, one of each of these things.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? Great, thank you for the conversation, appreciate it. Okay, now, we are going to take a five-minute break and then convene, see, let me ask you the order. Um, if we're gonna take a break, do I have to come back and, uh, dismiss to executive session, or can I dismiss to executive session now, which includes a five-minute break?
Yes, we should have forty-five minutes now.
Okay, so, right now, the council will dismiss to executive session for the purpose of evaluating the performance of a public employee under RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero one G. The session is expected to last for forty-five minutes. Uh, do I need to say the time? That would be eight oh five, I think. Eight, no, eight, oh, excuse me, nine.
Nine seventeen.
Nine, forty-five minutes.
Yeah.
No, nine, nine-ten, nine-ten, forty-five minutes.
We shouldn't get it.
So, five minutes, convene in, for executive session in five minutes.
One minute. Thirty seconds, please. Thirty seconds. Oh, excuse me, thank you.
Point of order, had Councilmember Nutting leave?
He, he dropped off at nine twelve.
That's unfortunate, thank you.
Yes, it is. So, yes, so I'd like to open with an opportunity for motions to be made. Councilmember Mahoney.
I'd like to make a motion that we increase the city manager's salary as a merit increase of six percent with an additional adjustment of four percent for COLA for a total of a ten percent increase which would equate to two hundred and sixty-nine thousand five hundred dollars for the year 2026.
Do I have a second? I've got a second. Councilmember Grace Matsui, any discussion? Councilmember Mahoney.
During this review, we had lots of looks at comps and so forth, and we hired City Manager Cafrey, I think, on the cheap. We got a, what we found was we had an excellent, far superior city manager than I think other cities of comparable levels have. I think that rewarding her with this type of merit increase and COLA adjustment is justifiable and gets her within the range of those peers she has. This is, this is something that I think is important to show and make a statement to our new city manager that she's done one hell of a job and we want to continue and we see her being part of our city and its prosperity in the future.
Any other comments? I can't help but just make a comment. I, I've been incredibly impressed with our choice and I think that she, I know in my evaluation it was rather glowing, I haven't made mention of it so much, but you know, you think, oh, somebody can't do that well. You know, honestly, I had friends when I was in high school that got perfect scores on their SATs. I, you know, people that got straight four points through high school, that's what a gray gown is all about. In other words, there are people in this world that shine and we can't just not let them shine just because we, we don't think that's reasonable. This person that we happen to secure for our city does shine and I think it's reasonable to honor that and recognize it. And working with her personally, she has done courageous things. Some people might say this, you know, this is the honeymoon year. It has not been a honeymoon for her. And she has done, she's had to face things that we did not even expect when we hired her and she has faced every challenge head-on without fear showing. I mean, she may have been shaken in her boots at times, but man, this woman has charged forward in the face of all sorts of different challenges. So, I have the utmost respect for her and the confidence that she's going to continue to lead the city extremely well. She's brought amazing initiatives, brought, raised the professional character of the city, so I'm happy to support this motion. Any other comments? Right, with no further comments, all in favor, raise your right hand. Councilmember Oxgar, Councilmember Grace Matsui, Councilmember Mahoney, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz and myself, all opposed. Councilmember Harris opposed. It passes five to one. Right. And Councilman, excuse me, of note for the record, Councilman, I think we did make that already, he departed at nine twelve, okay. I would like to entertain any other motions. Councilmember Grace Matsui.
I move to set the city's annual contribution to the city manager's deferred comp account to twelve thousand dollars annually until the year 2030.
Do I have a second? Second for, goes to Deputy Mayor Steinmetz. Any conversation, any discussion? Councilmember Harris.
This was the one area that I actually agree with and in fact, I would have gone further. I believe that because the city manager has a family, we can best show our long-term investment by protecting her retirement. However, unfortunately, the rest of the package is structured in such a way that it sends the wrong message to the public and we are in disagreement, but there's this notion, we have always, it's just, I don't agree that the first year, the, the second year is the key year for me, but just for what it's worth, this was the one item it, it will grieve me to vote no on because I believe that serving the interests of anyone who leads and has a family should be the paramount interest of the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you. I think this actually seeks to mitigate something that we didn't take into account when we went into our hiring discussion a year ago. The PERS system and the state system is not portable or comparable to the previous systems that Ms. Caferty had been a part of and we really didn't take that into and we really didn't take that into consideration about the kind of longevity that she would have had in a home system that didn't come over to Washington State. And I do hope that future councils take that into consideration if they're hiring a city manager from a state that doesn't have that portability. And I do think it is a recognition that, uh, we didn't factor that in, and also we want to ensure that it's not a longer-term financial hit making that move than we had anticipated. So, in fact, I think this is rectifying our own mistake. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this one? Right. All in favor, raise your right hand. Councilmember Oxiger, Councilmember Grace Matsui, Councilmember Mahoney, Councilmember Stein, uh, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, and myself, in favor, all opposed. Councilmember Harris opposed. Motion passes five to one. Do I have any other motions? Uh, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yes, with regard to the city manager's contract, based upon the annual evaluation of the city manager's, uh, performance, I move to amend the termination and severance clause to accrue at a rate of three months per year, per year of service, uh, until the cap of twelve months is reached.
Do I have a second on that one?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Mahoney. Any discussion? Councilmember Grace Matsui, and then Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
I'm a little more comfortable with a, a three-year out than, um, what was proposed in that amendment, but I'm willing to go with, uh, the majority on this one. Um, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
I think that, um, this, this particular amendment, um, addresses, uh, a number of things, uh, that with regards to job security, with regards to, um, leveling out with other cities. Uh, the twelve months is a pretty standard amount. Um, we want to see the performance over a certain period of time, and I think this gets us there faster, uh, than we initially had anticipated. And I think it provides a, a level of surety, um, to Ms. Caffrey that we do want to keep her here. Um, and yet it will involve a couple of councils that will have a chance to do that, and I think it's important that it get through that before we hit that final cap. Uh, and as a consequence, I think this is a reasonable way to approach that.
Councilmember Harris.
And this is extremely awkward for me. The state of Washington is in a state of recession, and, um, a long time ago, uh, a predecessor of the city manager, we started down a road that has created, um, a train moving in terms of salaries that is, it's like there's no going back, I guess, but it is, um, yeah, uh, but this rhetoric will strike. The, the city manager's, uh, communication with the public has been stellar, as I've said many times, but this will strike people as rhyming, at least with our previous experience of irrational exuberance. And in this climate, um, I would prefer to wait a year. And I would also, uh, just suggest that the second year, 2026, is going to be extremely interesting. And I think that the majority of this discussion, there should have been a way to structure this so that she feels the love, and we can have that broader discussion, um, next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Um, my only comment on this is this, this is a standard recommended by ICMA. What is it? Uh, City Managers Association. E-I stands for-
International-
International City Managers Association has standardized. Uh, they recommend this, this is standard, and a little bit higher if somebody has longevity in a position. So, uh, I feel very comfortable, uh, going with this and giving her a few years, a couple of years or so to get there, so. All right. Without further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. Councilmember Oxiger, Councilmember Grace Matsui, Councilmember Mahoney, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, and myself, all opposed. Councilmember Har- Harris, motion passes five to one. Uh, I don't believe there are any other motions. So I would, uh, moving forward, I would like to, uh, I think I'm going to, uh, count, we are going to, uh, pass on the Councilmember comments. And then I would like to offer up a few items for future agenda with some head nods, so I will read these items. Um, one, use the, use the, uh, segment Items for Future Focus in the evaluation, the city manager evaluation, as a springboard for expectations in 2026, and create a tangible document for the city manager. Uh, my recommendation is as a retreat exercise, but you can, as long as it comes forward on an agenda, the council that is there can decide how to do it. I recommend to come forward on an agenda, consider the formation of an ad hoc committee in August to review evaluation procedures and make recommendations to council. I recommend, uh, everything else is packaged in, review evaluation timeline and create a schedule and review evaluation procedures. And to somehow, uh, visit that in, by the first half of 2026, which, uh, we also heard that, uh, compensation philosophy could be visited. So that all is wrapped up in that, which at that time, there wasn't, there was another item about establishing a baseline, uh, for next year, and that could be visited at the same time that the evaluation is reviewed. Okay? So those are all items for our future agenda. Um, and do I have head nods? I do have head nods? And, all right. So, uh, that brings our meeting to a close. The next meeting date will be December fourth, the City Council Regular Business Meeting. As, um, as we have stacked business items before the end of the year, we will lay aside our December study session for business items on December fourth. Please remember to pick up after yourself on your way out. Councilmember Oxiger, would you like to take?
Mayor.
Excuse me. Yes, sir. Oh, you have a final motion, don't you? Thank you.
Yes, I'd just like some direction from the council.
Oh, thank you.
Would like the contract to come back, or would the council prefer just to have the staff pre- prepare, uh, an amendment and authorize the mayor to, uh, sign, based on the three motions that were just passed.
Councilmember Grace Matsui.
I would, uh, prefer that the, uh, staff, uh, make the changes in an amendment form, and I give, uh, the mayor authorization to sign based on the votes that we just had.
Second.
Third.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Uh, Councilmember Oxiger, Councilmember Grace Matsui, Councilmember Mahoney, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, and myself, all opposed. Councilmember, uh, Harris is opposed. Motion passes five to one. That's what you need. Thank you so much for grabbing me quick on that. Okay, so Councilmember Oxiger.
Ah, finally. I move that we adjourn.
Hey, do I have a second?
You do.
All right. All in favor? It is unanimous. All right. Thank you.